So I'd like to call the Plimpton School Committee meeting to order on October 27th at 5:47 PM. Do want to acknowledge that we're being recorded by Area 58. We're convening a little bit early tonight because we have a vacancy on the school committee. And the Board of Selectmen had asked me to strongly consider appointing someone for the remainder of the term, which would end in May. Said candidate wants to continue after that point, they would have to pull papers and run as a normal election. I did make sure that the paper ran an advertisement to remind people of this opportunity. I had over a month of really just some questions and passing in public, but nobody formally stepped up until this past Thursday, when Ross finally reached out and said that he would like to put his name forward as our candidate to take the fifth seat here on the Plimpton School Committee. So our job is to make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, and then the Board of Selectmen will make the official appointment. So Ross is here with us this evening. Thank you for coming out tonight, Ross. Also, I really appreciate you stepping up and stepping forward. Would you like to speak to the committee? We did receive some background information on you, or would you like to say a few?
Sure. Yeah, so my name's Ross McPherson. I've been in town for 14 years now. I've got two students here at Denne. I recently ended my run on the Town Properties Committee, and before that it was the Public Safety Building Committee. I was on there for nine and a half years. I, in the last four years, had been running the Cub Scout program in town, and have now moved up with my oldest to the troop, so continuing to do kind of oversight of both. And, you know, I knew that this was open and available, and I've reached out to John and said, if nobody steps forward, let me know. And it doesn't look like anybody has. So service is a big part of my kind of core ethos. And my wife has said I get two things, and since I left Town Properties, I have an opening for one more thing. So I'm happy to fill this as long as needed.
Excellent. Yes, that family committee outside of our day job commitments are a big important balance. So I'm glad that the family is supporting your candidacy and interest in becoming part of the school committee. Rob or Brian, did you have any questions you'd like to ask of Ross?
I don't. I don't have any.
You're really about these things.
So I'd entertain a motion for Ross to be our suggested candidate for the vacant position.
So move.
All right. John, we just had a motion with a second. The name of Ross is our candidate to the Board of Selectmen for appointment to the Plimpton School Committee from now until town elections. All right, seeing no objections or further comments, all those in favor? Aye. All right, congratulations. I'll convey to the Board of Selectmen that you are our preferred candidate, and I'll be back in touch with you depending on what their request is. I don't foresee them needing you to be there in person for that, but I'll let you know what their preference is.
Sounds good. I'll vote pretty well.
Absolutely. All right. So I'll recess us until 6:00 PM for the official start of the school committee meeting. All right, so we're back from a brief recess. I'd like to call the regular portion of the meeting to order at 6 o'clock on October 27th. This is the Plimpton School Committee, and we are being filmed by Area 58. At this point, if there is anybody from, oh, thank you so much, the audience would like to address the committee, I would entertain that. Okay. Seeing none on school committee correspondence, so I'll cover what just happened in our pre-meeting routine. We had lost one of the members of the school committee who joined Finance Committee, and under Massachusetts state law, anybody on Finance Committee cannot hold another committee in town that is subject to the budgetary oversight that FinCom has on them. So Dan had left us, and there was a vacancy, and I was approached by the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Dana Smith, with his request that we try and fill the vacant seat and have a full school committee for the year. I made the announcement at our last school committee, seeking any individuals who'd like to join us, and it was also in the newspaper. And I got one person who reached back out to us. Luckily, it was somebody that we're all relatively familiar with and who has experience in the town, in the service of the town. So Ross McPherson has come before us earlier tonight and voted unanimously to send his name on to the Board of Selectmen, who has the official appointment. If they so choose to appoint Ross, he would officially be with us until town meeting and town elections. So we've fulfilled this voting here.
Just a point of clarification, do they appoint, or do we jointly appoint? But you can't appoint without the selection.
So it's a joint appointment. So we've made our recommendation, and now it is extremely rare for Board of Selectmen not to. We do not need to be with them.
No, but do we need to vote to appoint him subject to the selection, rather than just saying it's our recommendation?
I don't think so. I think we're safe with the way that we conduct business this either. If the Board of Selectmen has an issue with it, I would be happy to help them solve their problem. Okay. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. Again, we've moved to the consent agenda, trying to speed up the process. This includes our minutes, the warrants and the bill schedule, the financial report, grants, donations, and awards, and we have a very interesting list of technology things on the surplus list as well. Do any of you want to hold any of those items, or do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a second. John, did you have any holds?
I don't have any holds.
All right. Seeing none, we're going to vote to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Aye. And it's unanimous. So we're on to new business, and this is the proposed School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding for discussion and a vote.
So in your packet, you'll find a proposed memorandum of understanding that the Plimpton Police Department. It is the template that you have seen in the past, that is very similar to the state's template that was approved last year and most likely the year before, if I recall correctly. There are no substantive changes, dates, names, but the content hasn't changed. I'm looking for your approval so that I may sign this and recognize our relationship with the Plimpton Police and the SRL.
Any questions or comments for the Superintendent?
No.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for the Superintendent to sign and move forward with the MOE. So do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving quick, Mr. Vannito, do you have any CASA updates for us?
I do. CASA held a staff luncheon for the folks here at Denne on September 17th. They've been very busy with some of their usual business throughout the school year. We had our Halloween dance here on Friday night, which is very well attended. CASA will be conducting a pajama drive called Beyond Bedtime. It's in partnership with Scholastic Books, and for every pair of pajamas that's donated, Scholastic will donate a book to a family slash child in need. So they're, as usual, getting involved in a little bit of everything, which is fantastic. And the first few phone calls and emails have been made about our Thanksgiving feast, which seems like it's quicker and quicker every year and getting bigger every year, but that's on the way, and CASA is absolutely instrumental in pulling off that event. So, like I said, as usual, they've been busy and all good stuff to benefit our students and staff.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Vannito. We do have some policies that we're going to be doing a first read of today, that we might want to just loop in CASA on, and if we have any questions, we might want to reach out to Russ just to get some clarification on. So just put that on your radar, okay? Moving on to principals update, Mr. Vannito, this is also you.
All right. Our current enrollment is 256 students. Most recently, we had our parent-teacher conferences on October 23rd. Mrs. Mead conducted the book fair here in the library throughout conferences and throughout that entire week of conferences. We don't have a firm number yet, but in chatting with her today, it sounded like we did very, very well with the book fair. We had an interesting new proposition this year. Students in grades kindergarten and first grade took three to, I guess, four weeks out of their physical education class, in which we had a master come down for some Taekwondo classes. This is the first time we've done anything like that, and people from Muhan, Total Martial Arts. We have our graduation tomorrow, with, I guess, the culminating event being that our kindergarten first grade students, among other things, will be breaking boards. So that is something I'll definitely have my camera out for. That has gone very well. We're hoping to do it with the other older classes as the year progresses. We've had horticulture students from the CTE program up at the high school, pretty much for the entire month of October, coming down whenever they could reasonably get down here where they're permitting. They've been cleaning up the grounds, the gardens, doing a great job. So thanks to the teacher of that program, Dan Stewart, and Director Elliot Glass. More curriculum-based, the school conducted our SABR testing that was done on October 6th, and kindergarten completed their first DIBELS on October 14th, so we have our baseline for everything and everybody basically done right now. I guess that's just about it for right now.
And you did your STAR testing for the rest of the students earlier this year, correct? For the baseline data for students?
Yes.
Excellent. Any questions for Mr. Vannito on his report so far? I'm glad the Taekwondo venture has gone well for the kids.
It's been interesting, honestly.
I'm glad to hear, potentially, that the older kids will get an opportunity to work with the master as well. So is this purely voluntary on part of the people running it?
Yes. And they came to us, and CASA did have some involvement with that as well. Worked out with our PE teacher, Mrs. Lynch. A couple of grade levels were kind of to move some things around so we can have the graduation ceremony tomorrow, so everybody kind of worked toward the same common goal, and I'm looking forward to it, so it should be, should be fun.
Great. I'm glad you took the chance, and I'm glad it worked out well for the kids.
Thank you.
So are we ready for the accountability presentation?
Absolutely. I believe in giving credit where credit is due, so I want to thank Tricia Clifford, Dr. Clifford as well, and Mr. DeSantis, our curriculum coordinator, in getting this presentation put together. They're both instrumental in helping me out, and we can jump right in. So the details of Massachusetts School and District Accountability System. The accountability system is designed to measure how a school or district is doing and what kind of support it may need. The system considers achievement, student growth, high school completion, progress towards English proficiency, chronic absenteeism, and advanced coursework completion. Schools and districts not requiring assistance or intervention fall under one of these categories down here, and schools that are requiring assistance or intervention kind of fall on this end of the spectrum over here, and I could show you where we fall as well. So this information, as you can see, goes back to 2019, before everything kind of went haywire. This year, 2025, overall classification, we are not requiring assistance or intervention. The reason for that classification is we're making moderate progress toward our targets. Progress toward improvement targets, we came up with a percentage of 40%, which is moderate progress toward our targets. If you want to take a glance just to see historically where we have fallen year by year in each one of those categories. And again, getting back to our accountability.
Excuse me.
Accountability percentile between 1 and 99 is reported for most schools. This number is an indication of the school's overall performance relative to other schools that serve similar grades, and it's calculated using multiple years of data for all accountability indicators. And again, if you go all the way down the line here, you'll see our accountability percentile for 2025 is at 69% not requiring assistance or intervention. There's a little bit of a gap in the testing here, which I can explain in the slide coming So as I said, we were taking a look historically at the last few years anyway. Yes, I made reference to before things went kind of haywire. 2019 was a relatively normal year, and obviously, everybody had the misfortune of COVID and all the experience through that, so there was no MCAS test administered in the year 2020. When students came back on a part-time basis in 2021, we gave half tests in grades 3 through 8. Our poor high school friends still had full tests at that point. We returned to a more typical model in 2022 of full tests in grades 3 through 8, and we have been on that same path ever since.
If at any point anybody has any questions, ask in the moment instead of waiting for the end.
So these are some statewide summary notes in English Language Arts. Scores increased for grades 3 through 8 as a whole and dropped in grade 10 compared to 2024. In math, again, compared to 2024, the percentage of students scoring meeting or exceeding expectations in math was unchanged in grades 3 through 8. Percentage of students who scored meeting or exceeding in grade 10 fell three percentage points. In science, technology, and engineering, scores were statistically similar in grade 5 and dropped in grade 8 in high school. So we'll take a look at English Language Arts here. This score is cumulative of all of our, all four of our grade levels that took English Language Arts, where it says DES grades 3 through 6, broken down by year on the right-hand side. So this year, our overall ELA percentage of students that were meeting or exceeding And again, that can be compared to years past. Next few slides break it down by grade level. Our grade 3 this year in English Language Arts had an overall score of 69% of students meeting or exceeding, which is in the ballpark of where they've been the last few years. Grade 4 had some nice gains within the last school year, going from 53% to 60%. And again, historically, you can see where that number has fallen since 2019, 2022, and beyond up to present day. Grade 5 had a particularly nice increase from last year to this, going from 43% of students meeting or exceeding expectations up to 64% meeting or exceeding expectations Grade 6 had a slight dip from '24 to 2025. If you happen to notice, almost all the scores in 2019 were fairly significantly higher than anything since COVID. I'm not sure if there's a true statistical correlation there. So again, this is a historic snapshot of how things have been going in ELA for 2019, 2022, and beyond.
What's the goal for all of these?
Our goal as a district is to hit 70% or better in ELA, math, and science, technology, and engineering.
What's grade 6 for across the state? Seems incredibly low.
I don't have that.
Is that on the earlier slides?
42.
42?
Yeah.
Thanks, Brian.
Are we speaking to why we're not meeting our goals, or are we trying to come up with a progress plan?
Yep, we're going to talk about that coming up. So this is broken down by reading and math. So for ELA in grades K through 6, the MCAS standards analysis, we're using analysis to identify strengths and areas for growth at each grade level. We're going to continue with Orton Gillingham Training for Special Education Teachers for consistent phonics instruction to improve reading fluency. This has been an interesting process to be a part of right from the ground floor. The Literacy Needs Assessment was completed in 2025, and we have a district literacy plan in place that was created in March of 2025. That's a group of educators from all, all elementary buildings and coming together to look at what is working, what's not working, what might be working well at Denne, why isn't it working well for our students as opposed to there are other grade levels that are using essentially similar materials but achieving different results. Those are all the certain types of things that we're looking at. So Phase 1 of the curriculum review includes core program review for K through 6. This should include professional development focusing on the science of reading. We're going to continue using RBT, which is research for better teaching, studying skillful teaching, high expectations teaching, and analyzing teaching for student results. We'll continue to differentiate instruction based on the individual needs of each student in the form of tiered intervention. In the area of writing, we'll continue to utilize grade-level writing benchmarks to assess narrative, information, and opinion writing. We're trying to create district-wide consistency for writing at each grade level, including common school writing languages, routines, rubrics, and protocols. Using MCAS writing analysis to identify areas of strength and areas for growth in idea development and writing conventions. A lot of these ideas are things that have sprung up from our different either data meetings, grade-level meetings. Teachers have used MCAS in a variety of other assessments to be able to look at, we're very strong in this area, where are we not as strong? What are we spending our time on? What are we getting the most results out of? So this is, I think, a deeper dive into writing than we've taken in a very long time. We revised scheduling to lengthen the ELA block to blend reading and writing instruction. We have PLC writing meetings to analyze benchmark writing for idea development and conventions. We have standards analysis to identify curriculum strengths and areas for growth at each grade level. And again, getting back to the Literacy Needs Assessment was completed in 2025. The literacy plan was created in March of 2025. So this is kind of where we're at right now. The ELA curriculum review in Phase 1 was 25, 26. This includes the core program review for K through 6. Again, I continue to focus on research for better teaching, studying skillful teaching, high expectations teaching, and analyzing teaching for student results. We'll continue to differentiate instruction based on the individual needs of each student. And again, this is, I give a lot of credit to Dr. Clifford, I give a lot of credit to Mr. DeSantis. We're not just taking a glance at MCAS results and moving along, we're taking a deep dive into a lot of different assessments and trying to get the most information we can about how are our students doing in that area.
So just to, I don't want to, I don't need to, I'm not going to repeat everything that Pete just said, but last year, several things happened. So at the beginning of the year, and part of the reason you see, or one of the reasons, or there are multiple reasons why you see an increase in English Language Arts scores overall in most of the individual grades. Last year, we, at the beginning of the year, did a lot of work where we had professional development days where we focused on standard alignment, making sure what we were teaching is what we should be teaching, and Brian led that up at the beginning of the year last year, so we did a lot of work on that. We did a lot of work with classroom OGs, so Orton Gillingham really teaching phonics at the classroom level to make sure there's foundational pieces. Obviously, we're going, we worked on comprehensions and fluency, and had more special ed teachers trained at Orton Gillingham to really address reading on the whole. And then also last year, we worked with Hill for Literacy to conduct a needs assessment to kind of get us a baseline on where we were with English Language Arts in the district. And then we created, we took a whole day in March where all the districts came together and created a multi-year literacy plan. And as an outcome of that plan, one of the things was to conduct a core program review this year to look at what is the best curriculum that we need to have in order to make sure that we're aligned, we're meeting the standards, it's got good instructional practices, it's got good assessments, and all of these things, and it really meets what's called high-quality instructional materials, which would be things that really tap into good decoding, good comprehension, and fluency pieces, all tied to what's called the science of reading based on research and all of those things. And after that, last year, we were fortunate to get a grant from the Department of Ed for $133,000 just for Plimpton. That will, that provides professional development, that provides paying half of what the cost would be for a curriculum, and it pays for having teachers be a part of committees beyond the school day, beyond the contractual, contractual time. And I'm excited to say that those groups have begun, those, those groups of teachers, which is what we want. You know, we want educators part of the, making the decisions on what curriculum, what instructional practices we're using. And this year, we're undergoing a core program review to look at high-quality instructional materials, materials that are rated meets across the board from Curate, which is what the Department of Ed sort of sends out and says, these are the ones we vetted and we think are the best. And we have two days of coaching that we're, I mean, that's, that's math, that's something different. We'll talk about that in a minute, but we have coaches coming in from the New Teacher Project, which is the consulting group that Desi has lined us up with, and I'm really excited about that. So the week of November 3rd, that group will be coming to do observations and talking with teachers and gathering data, so there's a lot going on, and you'll hear more about that upcoming, but that's just, that's just part, a part of all the other things that are going on too.
So. Yes. So I feel like we've talked about this for at least a few meetings now, and I think the end of last year also when the results came back, and I'm, I guess I'm slightly confused as, this might be a biased sentence about to say, but I feel like we have above-average students with really great teachers, but our results are lackluster at best. So I'm not sure how we don't see 30%, 40%, and go, what the hell is going on? And I, I mean, those, that's a great list, right? That's a great list, but it doesn't seem like we're, I don't know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what on that is new, or we're just, we've talked about these. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what on that is new or we're just, we've talked about these added, you seem like you're adding a huge amount of extra stuff. I mean, it sounds fantastic. At what point do we see like massive incremental progress towards beating our 70% goal that we've set for a couple of years now?
Dr. Prue?
Sure. Most change takes at least five years. And albeit, I would love for it to be instantaneous.
Sure.
But the reality is, is that these types of changes take a long time. There are two main levers that we can use. One is what we're teaching, making sure what we're teaching is aligned. And the second thing is how we teach it. Are we using the right instructional methods for the right children? So it's, it's not easy to make sure that you're meeting the needs of students because students' needs differ. So we've done a lot of work, for example, with support team and interventions and data teams over the past few years to try to build up that capacity of our, of our staff and of our administrators as well. And we're also looking at feedback from the administrators to staff in terms of looking at what kinds of interventions are taking place in the classroom and also allowing staff to work with other staff members who may be meeting with success in certain areas or certain strategies to go and observe what they're doing or to share effective practices. Because that's another great way that, that we can help raise the achievement level. We don't, we don't doubt the dedication. We don't doubt the ability of both our teachers and our students. But the reality is, is all of those things have to come together to move the needle. And you have seen some movement. It's just not going to be in the giant leaps that most of us would love to see instantaneously. It's, it takes time.
We did see a Herculean leap. For that fifth grade to go almost 20 points in one year is like, is unbelievable. That's not, that's not normal. You don't normally see that. That's like, whoa.
Well, that's not the same group of fifth graders, right? That's like an exceptional group of fourth graders that moved up in.
Well, it's not, I mean, it's, it's really, in my, my, no, it's based on the teaching. It's, to me, it's both curriculum instruction, as Jill said. That's, that's really where you're tapping into. You know, high-quality curriculum, high-quality instruction. And as Jill said, another piece to this, another caveat is Peter and I are doing rounds together. So providing really good feedback to teachers on framing the lesson, objectives, checking for understanding, using formative assessment, right? If, if the students don't understand the material, pause, reteach. We need to do it a different way. We don't just go on. We, we think of a different way to do it. We do small groups. We check for understanding. And those things take time to really embed in classroom instruction and to make sure that they're, they're really being done to a high level.
So are we also like, I'm sorry. So at what point, so if we, if we're saying the students are, you know, average, at best, or hopefully better, and our teachers are teaching improperly? Because I, I wanna believe that every teacher, at least that I've met, would know to stop when they think that the kids aren't understanding. At what point do we say it's not how we're teaching, it's sort of what we're teaching, the curriculum that we're using?
Right. And that's what we're doing right now. That's a program review. That's what's happening. Yep.
Can I try and?
Yes, please.
Can you go back to the, that slide that represents all three, all four schools? So yeah, one, four, sorry.
Two.
If you look at that 2025, you see some consistency there in grades three, four, and five. We worked very hard on aligning. If you look at the yellow scores to the left, 25. If you look at the anomaly there at 34.
Yep.
At this point, they're unit-based. Grade six is a unit-based grade. They're not using the current collaborative classroom curriculum that we use. So I don't wanna give them a pass, but they don't have a true curriculum right now and they're in elementary school. So my goal is to, this year, make sure that we have a curriculum up through sixth grade. That's my goal.
For the non-initiated, could you explain whether not, are they unit-based or how do you?
They create units based off the standards. So it's backward design. So they look at the standards?
Yes.
Okay. So they're more of a middle school concept? Because that's what seven through 12 does. We didn't adopt a true curriculum K through six. So that's what we're dealing with. But we're working this year to bring a curriculum K through six, hopefully. It might be two different curriculums. It might be a K to five and six through eight. But we need to get a true curriculum for grade six, grades.
Isn't that what the grant was for? Was for K to five and six were separate, or six to eight?
Well, it, the Prism grant is really K through three. That's the focus. Yeah, that's, that's, that's their focus. But we're, we're doing it wholesale. We're doing everybody.
I think if you look at that three, four, five, there is some consistencies there.
Sure.
And I think we're getting towards like our pre-pandemic numbers, which were very high in 2019. We're getting there. It's just slow, but that 34%, it does pop out.
You can find the cohorts with this data going diagonally.
Yeah.
Right? So you can see that grade six has consistently struggled with ELA, except for in third grade. No offense, we know historically the third grade MCAS is a little bit easier because it's an on-ramp for the kids to, to understand standardized testing. But I just wanna say, as, as the chair of this committee and someone who served for many years on school committees, Dr. Prue's been very clear with what she's trying to do with curriculum and instruction and has a vision. And since Dr. Clifford's come on board, I've really seen that vision blossom. And I can see the sprouts, the green sprouts starting to come out. I've always been told it's three years to fidelity for the classroom side to really understand how to use new materials to their best and integrate them into your own skill set. And then, like Dr. Prue said, a year or two after that fidelity, you really see the gains start to appear. So I sometimes give Dr. Prue a hard time. And she'll be the first to let you know that. But in this regard, I have all the faith in the world that she's taking us down the correct pathway for our kids here at Plimpton.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So the piece I wanted to just touch on, I know we're looking at grades. Are we also, are we also looking at the data following the students? Because, you know, some of the numbers, I, I understand that, you know, grade three is different than grade four is or than grade five. But when you do look diagonally, you know, you can see, you can see some big differences. And some of that, some of, I mean, it's the same students. They're taking the tests as they go along. But, you know, there seems to be something there too. And I think that's, that's an important piece to understand. Well, okay, maybe grade three's an anomaly, but still, you've got, you've got grade three, you know, two classes with 72% and both of them dropped significantly. You know, went 12 to almost 20 points when they hit grade four. And then you see some improvement where we can, but you have the current grade six just had a, just kept going down. And it, and it does help to explain, you know, the unit base there because grade six just, when you look over it the whole time, is just down. It's always down.
Right.
52% is better than, or 73% is better than not. But that looks like they had a banner year. But, you know, it is just interesting, although that's, no, that's the three to six. But 55% still, you know, when you've got, even in 2019, you've got these high numbers that are tracking through and then it drops.
Generally speaking, too, a sixth grade is usually part of a middle school too. And so in some ways, the middle schools departmentalize. So generally speaking, the teachers you have teaching ELA and math are, are within a department, and that's their special, that's their specialty. And with that being said, I, I think, and Brian and I and Peter have talked about sixth grade and work that needs to be done there. And, and I don't wanna just say rigor needs to be increased, but I think that's a piece of it. You know, when you go from fifth grade to sixth grade, generally speaking, other districts, that's a big leap. It's a big leap from fifth grade to sixth grade when you're in a six through eight middle school. So part of our work and part of our conversation is about that rigor in sixth grade in some ways. And that's, that, that's gonna take work. That takes work not only with the curriculum, but with the teachers. And structurally, how are we doing things? I think at the sixth grade level, especially in a building like this, you can really ask the students to, to do more and have more agency behind what they're doing. I think that tasking them with hands-on pieces and things that stretch them is really important. And those are the conversations we've had and the work that we know we need to do.
Do we see similar issues with sixth grade in the other district elementary schools?
I would say in some ways, it's, it's not as if Plimpton is the, is the only one that struggles, I would say, in sixth grade overall. I, I do think it's a piece of really making sure the curriculum matches that, that, that grade level. That sixth grade, generally speaking, is, is, like I said, a big leap. I mean, what you require, what you ask of kids in fifth grade, and I taught sixth grade math, it's very different. And you really are, you're going faster, generally speaking, with the curriculum and some, some things, and the things you're asking problem solving becomes, they have to be able to problem solve at a, at a higher level. So there's a lot of things that I think we can do to make that sixth grade curriculum, in my mind, more middle school-like in some ways. And I, I haven't been here long enough to know sort of what happened before. But I'm just saying, as someone who, who's been either a sixth grade math teacher in a department or in a district where sixth grade was part of the middle school, in my, this is my opinion, it, it looks very different.
I mean, we always have to remember that we have a small student body. And so each student carries a fair amount on each number.
Yes.
Now, that's a helpful thing when the numbers are down. But for improvement, that's a very positive thing because each student that you can touch starts to move the number quite a bit.
Yeah.
I mean, if you, if you've been at Kingston and look at how many students you have in there, it's gonna take, it takes a lot more students to move from bracket to bracket.
So that's
If you looked closer at fifth grade, that's exactly what happened. They took a lot of kids in need of improvement. And they somehow, the kids worked hard, the teachers blended well with them, bumped them over. It was almost a pure flip-flop between the needs improvement and proficient for fifth grade.
That's been a lot of the work too, which has been focusing on instructional modality. That's not what I call teacher-directed, where the teacher's in the front of the room talking, and more student-centered, where you have small groups, where you, where you break the kids down into small groups so that you can address, what Jason was saying, you know, really helping kids that need that really intensive, what we call is the MTSS process or the tiered intervention. And you take the time to really help those kids get what they want and really differentiate, give the kids around the higher end more of what they need. But that, that isn't necessarily always the way that teachers were trained, nor is it the way that they've been given feedback and professional development to change the way that they teach from a really different way of looking at teaching.
If I can just follow up, I don't know what it means. When I was on the school committee previously, 10 or so years ago, Plimpton's students were always much higher on the MCAS compared to the other two towns. And then the data showed that by the time they got to about 10th grade, it kind of leveled out. So Plimpton had a significant advantage. Is that too far back? Like what happened 10 years ago really throw out the window because there's too many variables that have changed? We just gotta deal with what we're looking at with this band here? It just seems, just look at this data, to me, just strikes me as really odd where we were so good. And now we're not. And we're not saying that's anyone's fault. I mean, I think the sixth grade teachers are the same, so, from 10 years ago. So it just, it just is really odd. I don't know what that means. It may be a rhetorical question, you don't have to answer it. But it's just, I just find these numbers shocking.
So having been a middle school principal in the real recent past, what you're asking sixth grade students to do analytically is different than the analysis that you ask of a fifth grade student. The addition of poetry into every piece of text analysis that you're doing in the MCAS. There, there's a, I think, a certain level of higher-order thinking that you are expecting from a developmental level of a, of a sixth grade student. And that's something that we have to teach students on how to do. Yeah. I think, oh, I'm sorry.
I would also add that right before COVID, the state made a change to the test. And they upped the ante with MCAS 2.0. So schools that might have been faring well under, for achievements and had materials that were aligned needed to once again update their alignment in several areas. But in addition, the test itself changed and the expectations changed. And you may recall, we went over all of those different categories that were going to have an impact. And the name of the game really became improvement. It's not just how well certain students did at the top. It's how many students who weren't performing well improved. And you were given certain targets. So the metrics changed as well in a sense. So it's, you're not looking at the same MCAS test that you would have been looking at 10 years ago.
I think at the end of the day, we would all love to see every kid who's capable being proficient or beyond, right? And we've sent a district benchmark of 70%. And at the very least, we wanna see ourselves doing better than the state average. Like you said, we have above-average students with above-average teachers. And hopefully, our curriculum rollout will be above average as well. And we will see those numbers instead, incremental growth. But I've been here for those old meetings and these new meetings.
You've been continuous. I'll take a break.
I also would like to say, part of it is what's done outside of the school day at home. The amount of parental involvement with doing homework, with checking for understanding, for test preparation, quiz preparation at home. A lot of parents are much busier. Kids' schedules at nighttime are extremely fragmented. You know, having something going on every single night of the week is not normal for a student. But yet, more and more of our students are doing at least one thing every single day. And then trying to balance relaxation and preparation for school. And we're also seeing literacy rates dropping. And nobody really wants to talk about the reason why.
I'll talk about it.
Less and less parents are reading to their children at home. And we know that students who hear 10,000 words a day or more versus kids who hear 4,000 words or less are gonna perform better in school once they get here with literacy skills and beyond. So what used to be a low-income, you know, situation where both parents were working, multiple jobs to make ends meet, and their children would suffer in school, we're now seeing it within our middle-class and upper-middle-class communities as less and less parents read aloud to their children at home before they even get to school and checking in on their homework and understanding at night, you know, after dinner time. Because so, so many people are so busy nowadays. So we will do what we can with the seven hours a day, 180 days a year we can with the kids. But it needs to be a true partnership between the family and the school system. It can't be done just on our end.
And I think you bring up a good point, Dr. Clifford. We were both looking the other day at our incoming, we just assessed our kindergartners on their fluency. And that's a key target number to look at of how much is being done by the time the kids enter kindergarten. So we were just talking about that, how to communicate with the community, how to get the town library involved, how to get the word out even into the preschools, what you can do as a parent to prepare your child. But on a good note, it looks like our fluency scores for Dennehy this fall are well above last year. So last year at this point, our fluency, which is our K to two huge indicator to be a fluent reader, was 53. This fall at 65 is the school. So it's a very good number. So if we can get to above 8, which I know we can, Dibbles will be in good shape to comprehend when we get to third grade, especially in the MCAS.
I think we have seen, you know, we have a new library director who's been there now a few years, a lot of programs. Library is now open Monday through Saturday. So it's, you know, there's a lot of improvement down too. So hopefully, that will continue to help. And there's a lot of kids showing up at the library.
It's now cool, you can go to the library.
If you would, advances to math, Mr. Big.
Sure.
So again, our first plans here is a collective of grades three through six. And on the right-hand side, you can see what those numbers look like. 2025, we showed 51% of our students meeting or exceeding expectations, which was slightly down from the year before. And then similar to English Language Arts, we're gonna break it down by grade. So overall, our math scores were down slightly. And we have So overall, our math scores were down slightly, and we have, we have some good plans in place for how we're going to try to tackle and address those issues. You can see grade three was down a little bit compared to what they had been at. Similar to grade four, down from 2024.
But significant improvement in the not-meeting expectations.
Correct.
Right? There was a shift over to the partially meets.
To that point, too, Jason, some of these, even go back two years, and that goes to John's point as well, where we had an interesting number, 40 here in 2023, jumped 18 points that year, and then back to, it, there is something to be said for looking at the individual cohort, we've looked at this stuff in a lot of different ways, and you can twist it to fit a lot of different narratives, but that's true.
Definitely tracks to have them in ELA numbers. Because you see certain cohorts that move through, because they seem to, and they seem to push through a few years, but then there's other anomalies that just don't fit. But it's funny, it's much more up and down by grade across years. So it's obviously, it's a completely different subject, which might have something to do with.
I believe Dr. Clifford pointed out that our grade five numbers made a significant jump from 24 to 25.
But there's an example where the 24, grade four class was strong.
Correct.
So you seem to see a little more of that going on.
Yeah, you tracked the cohort.
But still, you have, you have the.
That slide right there, for me, for the 25 data, what pops out is the not-meeting expectations, having that larger group again. And Peter, are your, are your data collection points throughout the year catching these kids? Are any of these kids surprises to you, or does your data know who these kids are, and they're already receiving interventions for the most part?
We have very few surprises. By and large, MCAS data tells us a story we already know, or we are getting to know it. Even in chatting with our reading teachers, the first thing I say after every DIBELS testing, after every STAR testing, Martha, is there anything that is going to surprise us? No, we've already talked about this student, but this one's already in a group, this one's doing this. So for us, this is more of a confirmation than a surprise.
What jumps out to me here is the not-meeting.
The red, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. 15.
Three times higher than any other year.
But it was high in the half, that was high in 24. If you follow that.
Are those numbers percents or students?
Percent.
Okay. So again, we have to think about cohort size.
Yeah, yeah, but again, you.
Yeah, following it through.
If you follow it through, and you see there, but it's interesting that as you go to grade six, that it doesn't tell, it doesn't tell the same story as ELA.
And to your point, Rob, looking at percents in 2024, our largest percent by far was in needs improvement, and that almost completely reversed in 25, where yet, we did have a significant number of students not meeting expectation, but that grade number completely dominated this entire group, which that's certainly a switch that we want to see.
Go back to grade four for me, please. It's the same group with the same score.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just interesting, because I think that amounts tracks, it's going to, you're going to, not more of a tracking.
So your intervention point, who have brought it up? But, yeah, okay. Fascinating.
Yeah, we have a grade of, you know, 30 kids. And again, to the point that we're, I think, we're all arriving at here, is we saw a lot of movement from 19 through 25 with grade six math. And again, the 24 happened to be a particular, or 23 was a very high year, went down a little bit, 24 went down a little more, 25. If we were to take the time to track the cohort again, sometimes that's a worthwhile effort to see how are these same students doing over time? But all of these things combined tell a story that we need to work on this, and that's the game plan that we're moving forward with, starting this year. So again, this is just another view of those same numbers. And so this is how we have been spending an awful lot of our time for math grades K through six. We have the new HMH program, which our district has made a huge commitment toward. We're in year one right now, people are getting used to the language, people are, people are creating their student learning goals, professional practice goals. Almost everything that I have seen has tied math into one or the other, so there is a huge emphasis on math this year. Looking at our benchmark data analysis, STAR math assessment in grades one through six, continue to implement data meetings to analyze math data and student needs. We have classroom assessments to implement, analyze consistent classroom formative and summative assessments to drive instruction and interventions. Something we've been doing quite a lot, MCAS data analysis, analyze math standards, performance at each grade to determine grade level strengths and areas to supplement. I don't remember exactly which grade level I was looking at last week, but after goals listed there, rationale for that goal, and it was very super-specific to, our students did not do a terrific job last year on whatever the subcategory was, and they stated data from that, and I was reading like, they're really understanding what we're trying to target, not just, we need to get better at math, but very specific areas giving, citing very specific data-driven pieces of evidence as to why this school is important to them, why they feel that their team needs to work on it, which is better than what we've seen in a little while. Interventions, provide targeted interventions during intervention blocks using the MTSS tracking system in Edge of Climber. And for professional development, we've had a couple days with a HMH math consultant during our professional development days.
And we'll have two days this year where the consultant will come in and spend the day here and go into classrooms and do observations with the grade level team, and then also do model lessons to help the teachers understand how to implement the new math program.
And Brian and I were just talking about that this morning. We sent information out to teachers, what's the best use of your time? Some grade levels wanted, I'd like to observe a lesson being taught by somebody that has done this many, many times. Other people wanted to teach a lesson, get some feedback from the person that knows this program really well. We're trying to use those two days to cater to what the teachers feel they can, is the best use of their time to have an impact on student learning. And our science numbers, which again, historically, if you discount 2023, have always been well within the high 50s, even high 60s. Last year, we were at 65% meeting or exceeding. And that is, as I said, that's been a fairly consistent number over many, many years. And for the science component, we're continuing to implement mystery science in grades K through five to ensure the grade level standards are being taught. Continue to provide teachers and students with hands-on lab experiences while learning grade level standards. Continue to implement Open Sci Ed curriculum in grade six. Teachers continue to receive PD on units. Consistency across grade levels, teachers will collaborate to use the district scope and sequence to teach grade level science, technology, engineering standards, assess and analyze student learning. Use MCAS to inform teaching, continue to utilize MCAS questions into each grade level's teaching and assessment to gradually expose students to the high levels of reading and responding to science questions. And receive professional development training on the new science, technology, performance-based MCAS test. And district-wide, again, people are using research for better teaching training for district teachers, principals, coordinators. We have Wharton-Gillingham, as Brian made reference to, happening at younger and younger grade levels in special education for reading fluency. We're employing a multi-tiered system of supports. Continue implementation of data analysis using district systems and protocols. We're getting Edge of Climber up and running, that's a platform to assist in MTSS and data analysis. We have professional development that focuses on student performance data. As we made reference to, we're in year one of the ELA curriculum review process and the core program review. We have grade level team leaders that are going to be working together all year long in each building, we're in year one of that. We're in year two of the math curriculum review process, and we'll be implementing HMH into math. Assessment benchmark, use data-wise process implementation. So we have large plans to try to attack each one of these individual smaller problems. Anything I can help with?
Any further questions for Mr. Vignito? So I think it's just important to remind people that even though MCAS is no longer a graduation requirement, it still counts for accountability through federal law. And our students taking the test seriously, preparing for it with their teachers here at school, getting a good night's rest and proper nutrition the night before continues to be something we request of families. And don't forget, when the students move up to the high school level, at least still at this point, the John and Abigail Adams Award is still part of the MCAS testing if students perform well and have good grades, that takes care of in-state tuition at any state college or university in Massachusetts. So MCAS still does count, it just can't be punitively used against individual students for graduation anymore. So thank you, Mr. Vignito, appreciate your presentation. All right, move on to our Director of Finance and Operations.
I actually do not have anything for you other than what was in the consent agenda tonight. Karen Trungali had left this in here just in case there were anything that I needed to talk about.
Thank you, Sarah. And on to Dr. Clifford.
Okay. One thing I want to talk about a little bit is the math curriculum review cycle, and as we spoke about just a few minutes ago, we're in year two, so the implementation of the new math curriculum is happening this year. There's still a steering committee that is, that meets and periodically checks in on how it's going in schools. We have two days of coaching that are coming up this year, but we have other professional development that the publisher is giving us and that we're also creating in-house. We also have ELA curriculum review cycle phase one, so, and I talked a lot last year about the curriculum review cycles, math last year, year one, year two this year, math. Right now, it's year one of ELA, and there are many committees formed. So K through 12, there's an ELA steering committee, and you can see the names of all the people who are a part of that. And we have good representation from all of the schools, which is a good chance for everybody to work together, come together for that. We also have a K through six curriculum council, and that's made up of teachers at each one of the elementary schools, and that's the group that's working with the consultants from the New Teacher Project, and it's doing the program review. And at the high school, we have a group, and also at the preschool. So there's a lot going along with English Language Arts. And I also included the activity timeline in here for math, so that's another piece, that's all of the things that are happening around math. So there's a lot going on, and as Peter mentioned a few minutes ago, another thing that's been added is grade level team leaders. So this is the first year, I think, in a long time where we've had grade level representation, where the teachers are being compensated after contractual time to meet with Peter once a month, to work with him, to communicate back to their grade level team, to really not only get a sort of a consistency across the grade level, but also vertically among all of the schools. And they're also meeting with Brian and helping him do data meetings. So that's another piece where we're really leveraging teacher leadership to be a part of all of these things. So, you know, I just have to say, a lot's happening to be implementing a new math program and then reviewing for a new one, and doing all of these things, generally, the sheer volume and pace is not normal. So I mean, so I have to, you know, hats off to the teachers and the principals and everybody, all the folks who are really leaning into this.
Any questions for Dr. Clifford? On to you, Dr. Prue.
In your packet tonight, you'll find a variety of October 1 data items. The first is the homeschool enrollment for grades K through six, which remains the same as last year, five students homeschooled this year. And in terms of homeschool enrollment at the secondary level, there was an increase of one student from Plimpton, going from three students homeschooled to four students at the secondary level. The second set of charts looks at, again, all of, all of the separate elementary districts, and you'll notice that in Plimpton, there has been an increase of six students since last year in enrollment, grades K through six, as of October 1st. But at the pre-K, seven through 12, in pathways, there's an increase of 18 students from Plimpton. So this is going to have an impact on your assessments in terms of student percentage or student numbers. If you look at the next chart, it's really just all the October 1 enrollment by grade levels, by, by the different towns. Plimpton is at 255 for K through six, and overall, there are 438 Plimpton students in all of the programs combined. The next chart is the assessment percentages, and you'll see Plimpton has increased by 1.3 for this year, since last year, going up to 11.3%. And then the shared cost percentage also increased by 0.7. Plimpton is now at 13.5% for the upcoming year.
Any questions for Dr. Prue? So right there, out of the gate, those additional percentage points for the shared cost should be relatively nominal, but it's not going to be negligible, and that 1% increase in the assessment to Silver Lake will be a little bit more tangible to see. It's just something we have to be cognizant of as we move forward with the budget cycle of share.
In addition, we have met with Principal Vignito to go over his initial budget requests, and we'll be meeting again in November. We'll also have our shared joint meeting, and Dr. Tucker will be presenting her overview of special education programming, and we'll also have Mr. Pello there to provide an overview of technology, and Brian will represent curriculum forecasting for the upcoming budget cycle. So we have started the budget process, and as we stated before, our goal is to have a vote, Sarah's calling it a voteable budget by December.
Which is a huge task, and a huge ask for her. I really think as we get further into the budget season this year, once we see what Sarah comes up with, you know, what does a level service look like for, for the Denet? What percentage does that come out at? Is it going to be above a 2.5%? If so, what would a 2.5% budget look like here at Denet? Something that would not necessarily require an override in the town to sustain? And then any additions we want to look at, I would almost say that we look at them à la carte, one at a time, to see how we might fill those into either scenario. Unfortunately, the trend is continuing across the Commonwealth, where we're seeing more and more schools and school districts having to go for over. and more schools and school districts having to go for overrides just for level service budgets. I'll, I'll repeat that, because this is not what overrides used to be for. Overrides used to be to expand, to dig in and do something new and innovative. We might need an override just to survive. And again, once we get to that point in that decision-making process, the school committee and the school department have to be very careful about acrosolizing for either scenario budgetarily. It would really be up to members of the community, parent groups, to advocate for either side if we do need a mild drive, okay? Because we are bound not to use any of the resources of the school department to acrosolize for more months for the school department. So just as we get closer and we start talking about that, we'll get an opinion from Russ. I know last year, when we were talking about potentially a debt exclusion or an override, we got some opinions from town council as well, so I'll make sure that we're all refreshed on what the rules are around that. All right, thank you, Dr. Prue.
Thank you.
Moving on to subcommittees, admin review, I don't believe there is been any meeting or any need. On for policy, can I have a motion to waive the actual read? Do I have a second?
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, awesome. So, pretty standard stuff, background checks, just adding the background checks we do to the language. Access to the buildings, making sure we're very clear who's supposed to be here, when and why. School food and nutrition meal modifications, to make sure any student who has medical or religious modification to a meal doesn't get charged for, for a meal here at school. All right. Gifts and solicitations by staff, this is something we, we know about very well, because every two years, we have to take a ethics review committee to make sure we know we can't take more than a fifty dollar gift from anybody, this is in line with that. One of the interesting ones is the student fundraising activities. It basically says that students can't be incentivized or punished for engaging or not engaging in fundraising, so we just need to be very careful. This is the one I was talking, that we might not wrap CASA into.
That's awesome, because Peter brought one up at the beginning.
Mm-hmm. So this isn't officially our policy yet, and if we need to talk to Russ, we will, to make sure that we're following the letter of the law, because again, most policies, whether we adopt them or not, there's a law that's actually backing it up. So we'll make sure we know where we are with this one before we do the second. Okay? Relationships with parent booster organizations, again, we'll look into that one too. Parent advisory councils, just updating some of the language, a lot of school districts have special ed parent advisory councils, we do. Some districts also have ELL packs as well, or second language packs. So that's just to codify the language of understanding between us and them, and again, viscerated to the school policy. Nothing radical, okay, except for the things that we need to make sure CASA's on board with and Mr. Vignito's, where, any questions before I read? Okay, motion to accept policy, ADDA, ECAB, EFDA, GBEBC, JJE, KBE, ADG, and KI.
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Negotiations?
No.
Appreciate all the work you have done in the recent past on that front. Union thirty-one, as Dr. Prue just mentioned, there is a meeting on Thursday, November thirteenth. I want you guys to know that I will not be available for that, so we need at least one of you to show up, so they have quorum and they can have an official meeting.
Is that five o'clock?
Let's see. I think it's a six o'clock.
I think it's a six o'clock, so it's not a slow. No, it's, is it virtual this year?
It's virtual.
Yep, it's virtual, and it's so everyone can get their presentations once instead of four times.
Yeah. So it is six PM on November thirteenth.
Pilgrimage collaborative, we are without a representative to the pilgrimage collaborative. I have not had anyone step forward to take that on. It is a huge ask, some of us can't do it because they're also in charge of the retirement accounts for fiduciary reasons, so we'll see if we can convince Russ to put it back. All right, moving on, capital improvement, capital request. Peter, as we get into the budget, just make sure you're bringing up anything that you think the building might need in the next zero months to five years.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And moving on to. Sarah's question. Oh, Sarah, go ahead.
Something that we know about for a capital request is the phone system is going to need to be replaced, it is reaching end of life, and in January of 2027, the phones will no longer work. And so the, so we have put that into the budget, in the operating budget, as a capital tech item, just so we have it there, so we can talk about it, but just so you know, that, that is in there, and it should either stay in the operating budget or be pulled out and paid some other way.
But, and how big a breadbox is it?
Smaller than you would be afraid. It's not, it's not.
I'm afraid about twelve dollars, right about that.
Yeah. I, Steve was very happy, because when he told us about this problem, and we saw the number, it's actually less than we paid ten years ago from when we moved to voiceover IP.
Thank you, because I'm like, didn't we do this? But it was nine years.
Yep, but again, as with everything in education nowadays, it seems like once a subscription runs out, you have to renew and start all over again.
It's like a washing machine.
So the technology to run, the security for our voiceover IP is no longer going to be supported, as Sarah said, in about two years, which puts it as a not emergency measure at this point, but a critical capital request.
It's gonna have to go in this town meeting or special town meeting in the fall, in the following year.
Yeah.
I see we lost legalization along with this agenda.
Oh.
That was not on purpose, that was an oversight, but we have other matters unforeseen at the time of posting, and I don't think it's controversial, so if you would like to make a presentation, we'd appreciate it.
I may have to lean on our superintendents and several of the meeting, but I have a general idea of what happened.
Okay. You might want to do it before I do my legislative agent update.
What do you think it would be happier? No, so we, I mean, they did meet, and I think there was a lot of sort of procedural stuff going on and setting up, you know, we do have a contract now with the Collin Center and moving through, we're looking at an eighteen-month out till we have sort of final report. So there's a lot of, lot of data to be done, a lot of work to be done, setting up sort of, you know, groups to help all the center be able to gather that information, both from the district but also from the towns, since, you know, a lot of the elementary school stuff is going through the towns themselves. So we'll play along.
One of the things the Collin Center had us set up was a working group, so there's one person from each town on the working group, and John, you were nominated and voted to represent.
Yes. They, they did not tell me, so that's good.
Very good.
Wasn't really anyone else to pick, so. So we'll have, you know, there'll be more to come, you know, probably four to six months out before we'll, we'll just be able to have a gathering in the next few days.
Thank you, Josh.
Silence for legislative update?
I'm saying all the words I can't say out loud in my head before I start. So legislative agent update, first, I'd like to say shame on everybody who works in Washington DC, who is a congressman, senator, or in the executive branch of our government. The fact that nutritional assistance may expire this week, and the most vulnerable of our society will be strapped to make ends meet and put food on the table is unacceptable in 2025. It's absolutely unacceptable. Not to mention the fact that the Department of Education, which I have no great love for, bits and pieces of it have eroded over the past several months, and the shutdown of the government has really put a nail in the coffin. Luckily for us, the title funds have come through for this year, this is a big question mark again with the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, whether or not title funding will be there for next year. IDEA, which is the federal version of Circuit Breaker, that helps reimburse us for our most vulnerable students, students on IEPs, seems to be okay for the moment, but again, it's historically underfunded. IDEA is supposed to pay for forty percent of extraordinary cost for the education of special ed students. During last year's appropriation, it was fourteen percent. So even tripling that wouldn't bring us up to the statutory level at this point, it's just beyond. Moving on to our state legislature, they finally started to have listening sessions on chapter seventy, which is the state funding formula for schools. It's like a day late, and I'd love to say a dollar short, but it's more than a dollar short. Last year, over two hundred twenty schools, cities and towns in Massachusetts received just minimal aid. We were very lucky to get minimal aid, up to a hundred and fifty dollars per student, but it is not enough to meet the inflationary pressures that we are seeing in school systems. There's not a single house in Plimpton that has not seen costs go up year over year at two and a half percent. And I'm sorry to say it to the voters of Plimpton, two and a half percent is not going to be able to provide enough dollars for the school to maintain level services. So we're going to have a very local decision to make in May, because the federal government is not coming to our assistance. Unfortunately, it doesn't look like our state government is coming to our assistance. So this is going to be a locally controlled situation, where we will present options to the voters of Plimpton, and Plimpton is going to have to decide where its values lie. Do the values lie in funding the Denet and providing a high-quality education experience to our students, or are we going to have to face what cuts may have to be made here? We've worked extremely hard during the past several years to make ends meet, the town leaders have worked with us, the voters at town meeting have hit our backs, and I'm hoping this year that we will see that same level of camaraderie and putting our heads together for the best solutions that make the most sense moving forward. With that being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Soon.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you.